I'm Stacy Myers. I'm Chair of the Chamber's Advocacy Committee. Appreciate you all being here on an early Thursday morning. And we've had a couple of these already and they've been very informative to those who have attended and so we're looking forward to a good conversation this morning. Our moderator this morning is Gene Patterson. Most of you know Gene. And he will give you the rules and guidelines for our discussion this morning and then kick off the conversation that we'll have and I'll have a couple of comments at the end. Gene?
And I apologize about the hour. Actually, I'd sort of suggested we do it at this hour because it works best for my schedule, so my apologies to the candidates and to the crowd. All right, so today we are talking about the School Board here in Oak Ridge and we've got two seats open. We've got three candidates here this morning, so let me go through our rules a little bit. Each candidate will be given one minute for an opening statement and a minute for a closing comment. The order, we will go from, I guess it would be your right, my left, this way, and then we will continue to sort of move in that order. Audience members will submit questions, so I hope you have lots of them and I think Greta will be taking those on little cards, index cards, and we will ask each of the candidates those same questions. So each of you will be given an opportunity to respond. Each candidate will have about a minute or so and Greta will be the timekeeper in the back. She'll hold up a red card when your time is about to wrap up. So if you would, please keep within the time limit. We'll get as many questions in as possible and if you continue to go over, I will throw the hook on you and pull you offstage. So, again, you'll get to answer, you'll speak here on opening and closing statements, but you'll answer the questions from our audience at your seats. You can't save up time. You've got a minute for each of the questions and for your open and close. Again, we have a timekeeper in the back. No audio/video recording in the audience, folks. We've got this being taped, so you'll be able to see that on community television. Again, I'm the moderator. I'm a Communications Public Affairs employee at Consolidated Nuclear Security at Y-12 and we thank all of you for attending because, yeah, the great thing about these forums, and I've sat through a couple of them now, is that as a person who's come into Oak Ridge in the past year and a half or so, I think it's a shame I can't vote because I feel like I'm very qualified in terms of being educated on all the issues in the two forums that we've had so far. And I look forward to what our candidates this morning have to say because I think, you know, the value of these forums is the information that we gather and the sense that we get of each of the candidates. And so we feel very good about the fact that we are, the Chamber's hosting these forums and we hope that you get as much out of them as I have so far in this political season. So let's begin. And Myra, you're the farthest to our left. You have one minute for opening statements and if you would, please come up to the podium.
My vision for Oak Ridge Schools is to have every child achieve grade-level reading and math by the end of 3rd grade. Currently, according to state statistics, almost 60% of Oak Ridge students in Grade 3 are performing below grade level in reading and math. Middle school and high school scores indicate these overlooked students remain at 60% unprepared for college and career upon graduation from Oak Ridge High School. If students are not on grade level by 3rd grade, it appears they never overcome that deficiency. This demands our attention. My approach to achieving this vision will be simple but laser-focused. Equip every student with the resources necessary to master reading and math so that they may succeed in whatever direction life takes them. All children, regardless of their background, are capable of achievement and if we want truly excellent schools, we must set the bar high and strive at all costs to reach for a 90% proficiency in reading and math regardless of background.
Thank you and thank each one of you for being here and thank the Chamber for hosting this. My name is Keith Philauer and I'm currently Chairman of the Board of Education. You know, I've learned many years ago that the things that you're able to accomplish and achieve, you're only as good as the people that surround you. So it's important to me that I thank those people who surround me today in the Oak Ridge Schools and help me do what I do. First, that would be my family. Without their support and their direction, I would not be able to do what I am doing. Second would be my campaign treasure, Alan Tatum, who has been with me for many, many years over the campaigns that I've run. Next would be my colleagues on the Board of Education. I work with an outstanding group of individuals and I thank them each day for what they do for education. And many people probably don't realize, but the Board of Education has one employee and that's a superintendent. And we have a superintendent in place who gives us direction and establishes goals for our community, for education, and I am thankful for that.
Good morning. Thank you for coming out because I realize that not everybody is an early-morning person as I am, so I'm always glad to see you here when you join me. I'm running for my fourth term on the Board of Education. I have been very fortunate for these three terms to serve with some of the most amazing people. We don't all think alike. We don't always agree, but we get along well. We discuss things in a civil manner and we learn from each other. Now, you will hear sometimes statistics thrown out, like 60% of our 3rd graders are below proficiency in reading. That's inaccurate. Please look it up yourself. But the other thing to know is that the TCAP scores on the state's website is for both reading and language arts. If you look at reading proficiency, our 3rd grade proficiency is 82%. So I look forward to answering your questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we'll begin with our questions. And again, please, if you have questions, get with Greta and fill out an index card and we'll get them to our candidates. So the first question will go to Keith. There is a perception that the working relationship between the City of Oak Ridge and Oak Ridge Schools is better now than in the recent past. What will you do to encourage continuous improvement of a productive and effective relationship between the two groups?
Well, I'd say right off that that perception is correct. I think the working relationship between the Board of Education and the City Council has come from being out here to almost just right here. And I attribute that to a couple of factors and these factors will continue to make that relationship prosper. And when that relationship does prosper, the only thing that can happen is success for our community. One of those things is the fact that our superintendent meets on a very regular basis with the city manager. And in those discussions, he's able to bring back to us as a board ideas that he and the city manager are working on and shared projects and shared relationships. The Board of Education and our relationship with each council member is excellent. And the way we will continue to foster that is simply by dialogue. As long as we continue to talk to one another, as long as we continue to share ideas, then we're going to get right here where we need to.
Thank you. Angie?
I think that Mr. Philauer summed it up very well. Our relationship with council has improved significantly. A lot of that is built on personal relationships and I have made an effort with this council to get to know the members individually, to speak to them candidly outside of any formal environment, to share information, and that's the key, is the information sharing. Neither side likes to be surprised. So the more we do that, and I think we have some very excellent people running for City Council for this election, so I see a lot of hope that we can grow even closer and work even more efficiently together.
Thank you.
I think it was a very accurate statement that Angie made that said we learn from each other. I think that the city and the schools should be learning from each other and we should look at all the issues that really are facing us, especially the academic problems. And just to show the statistics on reading, for 2015, Glenwood had 3rd grade reading proficiency at 46%, Linden at 56, Willbrook at 22, and Woodland Elementary at 46. Those averaged to 43%. That means that 57% of our kids are not on grade level in reading at the end of 3rd grade. This deficiency they don't overcome. This is something that we need to look at as a city and school board together, learning from each other, listen to the parents and the teachers and what are their issues and let's learn from them too. We all have a duty and an obligation to our whole community, not just to each other on the board, but to everyone who's concerned.
Thank you. The keys are the foundation of the Oak Ridge Schools produce graduates who are ready for careers and/or additional education. Do you support the keys and if so, please explain why? And if not, please explain why.
I absolutely support our seven keys to college and career readiness. And for those of you who are not familiar with it, that is all students' reading proficiency at or above grade level by the end of 3rd grade, all students' math at or above grade level by the end of 4th grade, math and reading at or above grade level by 6th grade, all students meeting the ACT Aspire benchmarks for college readiness by 8th grade, all students' fluent in financial literacy, all students scoring a 27 or higher on the ACT, and that's the big fat hairy goal that is going to be tough to achieve, but I think we can do it. Then all students participating in either dual enrollment, AP classes, international baccalaureate classes, industry certification, or military preparation by graduation. If we can accomplish those things, we will truly have every student ready for whatever is next after high school.
Certainly support it. These are very wonderful goals, as long as we can actually do them. And we've spent several years already with these keys, but failed to live up to 3rd grade reading, 4th grade math, 6th grade both. We are not reaching the ACT scores that are desired and the preparation for graduation, college and career readiness. So in support of the keys, we need to consider what the teachers have to say about what they need. The 3rd grade teachers have some very great needs and they don't feel like they're listened to as they want to try to present their needs. I've heard people say their concerns fall on deaf ears and we need to do better than that. We need to work together. We need to listen. We need to ask them, what do you need in order to reach 3rd grade reading? They have an answer because I've talked to them. They know what they need and so let's listen.
All right, thank you. This is sort of a weird question, going to a guy named Keith, but Keith, do you support the keys?
I told the superintendent when he was putting this plan together that it wasn't necessary that he named it after me. But anyway, absolutely. This certainly gives us a foundation as a Board of Education and a school district for where we want to take our students. And you have to look at the seventh key. All students participate in AP coursework, dual enrollment, industry certification, or military preparation program by graduation. That is the one, that last one, is the one missing piece of that. Next year, we plan to have in place, for the first time in Oak Ridge High School, a junior ROTC program which will help fulfill that. Education is a journey. Education doesn't fulfill itself in the 3rd grade, the 1st grade, the 8th grade. All of it works together. Our goal as a board is to provide a quality education for all students so they can reach that seventh key and be prepared to move on in their life.
Very good. Thank you. Myra, you get this question first. The Oak Ridge preschool is located in a Manhattan Project-era building. Do you feel Oak Ridge needs a new preschool building and please explain your response?
I feel that at this time, we need to focus on academics. We need to focus on getting these kids by 3rd grade on reading levels. The preschool also is not available to all citizens and all families. It's restricted to certain needs and therefore, while I can see the value of a new preschool, I can see the value of us moving it out of that building, I do feel that we need to focus on more academic issues before we would prioritize that. The reason that reading at 3rd grade is so important is because we all read in this room. We take it for granted. But there are almost 60% of our kids who are not able to read as efficiently as all of us. And that is a debilitating problem for them in all of society. In everywhere they go, they can't even possibly read the labels in the grocery stores. If they cannot learn to understand language and the stats show if it's not handled by 3rd grade, they never improve it.
Thank you.
So we need to do that first.
All right. Thank you, Myra.
Yes and yes. Mr. Eby is in the audience will tell you that his previous 10-year-old Board of Education, preschool was a discussion item at that point in time. We're finally farther along than we've ever been on bringing to fruition a new preschool facility. A goal out there would be that someday, the preschool facility would be available for every student in the City of Oak Ridge. It is a beginning for those students who need help to get prepared for their entrance into our system K through 12. The preschool offers the opportunity for those students who have not perhaps had the initial opportunities educationally to get almost a head start. The facility is a money pit. Financially, it is becoming a burden, not just on the school district, but the city as well, and we do need a new facility.
Building on what both of my fellow candidates have said, yes, 3rd grade reading is a priority, but you have to look at the research and understand what is necessary to attain that goal. We have significant numbers of children entering school at kindergarten unprepared. We have some who can already read when they get there and some who don't know their alphabet. What you have to do is do more in those earlier years before they get to 3rd grade to accomplish that 3rd grade goal. The new preschool building, first of all, if we don't do it, we will not have a preschool because Head Start will not allow us to continue in that 1943 building. They won't. We're kind of on a free pass this year because we have progress underway. If we want to meet that 3rd grade goal, we must build the new preschool and we must work toward expanding it so that more children will need to attend.
Very good. Thank you. Keith, you'll answer this question first. Middle college is now offered in several surrounding school districts. Do you believe Oak Ridge Schools should introduce the program?
We were, just this week, at a meeting where there was discussion or comments being made by other districts who have a middle college program in their educational concept. I would have to say at this point, I really believe that our focus continues on dual enrollment. I think that's where we're going to gain the most benefit. The middle college concept primarily where you come out of your education career and have a college degree in hand as almost you finish your high school career. I think the benefits, again, that we receive educationally at this point in time in Oak Ridge, our emphasis should be on dual enrollment.
Looking for a stat here that I had, but presently, we have a very strong Advanced Placement program. 33% of our graduates leave us having gotten a passing grade on at least one AP exam. That's phenomenal. It really is. The middle college program is interesting. It's one that I would like to learn more about, but I don't have enough information on how it would work for us here to know how feasible that is to do right now. Right now, we have our priorities to meet the seven keys and we've already begun implementing a number of things to get toward those. We can't take on too much at one time, so I think it is a possibility, but I need a little more information.
The way I see it, schools are all about the students. What do the students need to be challenged in adulthood at that level? I think that this would be a wonderful program. I'm proud of our area schools who are doing this. And I have heard some people in the community quote school board members as having said, having been negative on this idea and not willing to work with Rome State and Pell Sippy on this. But it's about the students and I feel that we could be holding them back. If we have the opportunity to do this, we could be holding them back. We're causing them to go outside of our school district and be burdened with possibly more school debt over the course of four more years and I would really like to hear some more stats and facts that would substantiate not doing it.
Very good. Thank you. This first question will go to Angie. Earlier was discussed about the working relationship between the City of Oak Ridge and Oak Ridge City Schools. Describe in your mind the linkage between the success of the City of Oak Ridge and the success of the system.
Well, there are a number of factors. The first and most obvious is funding because a significant portion of the funding from our schools comes from the City of Oak Ridge. So they have to know what our needs are and they have to be willing to meet those needs to the extent that the state and the county governments deny. But there are other factors. We've had quite a bit of discussion in the last few years about the demographics changing in this city. And anybody who lives here knows that it's true. Our demographics have changed dramatically just in the last 10 years. Why is that? Because the housing in a large part of this city is World War II-era housing that was meant to be temporary. As that has turned over to rental property, it has attracted larger and larger numbers of low-income families with children. These families often move frequently. One of our elementary schools had, I don't know if it's still the case, but there was one year, we've had an 80% student turnover in a year. How can you be measured on what you taught these kids if 80% of them moved? So a lot of the city factors impact us. Our productivity as an education system attracts the new residents that the city wants, so we're very closely.
I really would like to say, I'm sincere and I hope someone will follow on this, the information about having 80% turnover in the student body in one year, that's awfully high and hard for me to grasp, the truth of that. The relationship is important and it does lend itself to success or failure of both bodies. However, if money were the answer, we would have already achieved 90% student proficiency in reading and math. The schools are not short on resources. I've talked with teachers. 3rd grade teachers say that the schools jump on every bandwagon that comes along. Issues of greatest importance to parents and taxpayers are ignored and employee issues like pay and benefits are highlighted. Improving student achievement and the best interests of the children are always the nominal goal, but the results speak for themselves. We need to do more than just ask the city for funding and be worried about demographics because every child can learn from every background. We don't need to be making an issue of skin color and financial resources in families when the schools are responsible for the education of the children, not the parents responsible for it.
I think the answer is very simple. It's important that the Board of Education and the city have a collective vision and if we work on that collective vision that encompasses all the needs of the community, whether it's housing, whether it's education, whether it's job, whether it's recreation, if we're all working together on that vision, then that's where we're going to see the greatest success.
Very good. Thank you. In our local election, there has been discussion about term limits. Do you feel the Board of Education should be term limited and explain your answer?
I believe that this, the answer to this is self-evident. I believe that as generations mature and grow, that we that are older and experienced should mentor them and then turn the ball over to them. We should not try to keep in positions for long terms, like 15 and 20 years. When there's a next generation ready to be mentored and move into those positions, we can have an influence on them. We can get into the government classes at school. We can walk them through college. We can encourage more kids to study political science. I believe that term limits are a good thing and that we should implement them across the board, all across the country.
First, let me clear up. I have not served on the Board of Education for 20 years. It may seem like I have sometimes with the work it can do, but I have not. I'm completing my 15th year on the Board of Education. This is a tough call. I guess I have a mixed answer. On a national level, I am probably for term limits. On a local level, I am probably not for term limits. And the reason being, since we are on the local level, I think the quality of experience, the quality of dedication, the quality of understanding the responsibility of the job, if those qualities are present in an individual, then I think that person, he or she, who can make an impact on their community, should have the opportunity to do so.
I think he said it very well, but the bottom line is that's not a decision that's mine to make. That decision rests with the people of the City of Oak Ridge. And to the best of my knowledge, in the last charter commission, that wasn't even raised. So it must be not that big a deal. If the people of Oak Ridge decide they want it, I would certainly abide by it.
Very good. Thank you. The challenge to fund the Oak Ridge School budget increases each year. At a time when revenues are not growing at the same rate as the needs for funding, what programs or initiatives do you think should be considered for either elimination or decreased funding?
That's a tough question.
We'll give you a little extra time, each of you, for the answers to that one.
You know, we're faced each budget cycle with looking at the programs that we are presenting for our education composite. Each year, we struggle with what do we add because you do have to add because education is a changing process. Every class that we might consider or every program that we might consider taking away, there's going to be somebody out there that that's the most important program to them. Those people are going to be students and that's the most important program to them. I think what we have to work doing is, we have to work to get the state to have a better grasp of their funding of the BEP, to say that the BEP is fully funded is incorrect. It's funded to the standards of the BEP, but it's not fully funded to the standards of what the needs are in the local districts. If we can ever get to that point, some of the funding issues will clear up.
I can't do better than Keith's answer. The only realistic option for us, in every single year I have been on this board and worked on the budget, we've looked at what can we cut? Every single year. We have cut some programs. Driver Z is one. Was that a good decision? Is it good for our students to not have professional driver education or to go out and the parents have to pay for it if they get it? I don't think it is. So our only option is to look at how can we maintain the programs we have more efficiently? It's difficult. It's getting more difficult every year, but there are options. One of the things that we are engaged in right now with the city is looking at our energy efficiency. One of the things that we are engaged in right now with the city is looking at our energy efficiency. How many thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars could we save if we made some changes? There could be options for collaboration with the city. What if we turned over transportation to the city, and they use the buses part of the time for city transportation, and then morning and afternoon for the schools? Those are things that we could look at. But cutting programs, I can't name any.
I feel that the school superintendent may have some answers on this, because he's more directly involved with what goes on in the schools. I do object to cutting any service that directly affects students. A lot of our students are not able to get to school without the buses. I feel that that should not even be a negotiable issue. Six million dollars in reserves can help when we're in a crunch. But just like our personal budgets, we need to manage things so that we have a little excess to sit there in case we go through a time when we're in a crunch. If we have been in a crunch for an extended amount of time, then we have a problem in management and on the school board and not taking priorities where they should be in the classroom and with the students.
Superintendent Borchers is in the room, so let me ask you first, Angie. What is the appropriate relationship that a school board member should have with a school superintendent? And to what degree, beyond approving his actions or her actions, should the school board member be involved in curriculum issues within the school system? Sort of a double, two questions there.
Well, the relationship should be professional. We are fortunate to have attracted the best superintendent we could possibly have gotten. I'm very pleased with the decision that we made four years ago. How involved should we be in curriculum? We should be knowledgeable about it. There comes a time where we do have to vote on it. An example was, one of the decisions made in my first term was on math textbooks. But that was related to the curriculum issue, because it was a question of, do we continue with everyday math, or do we move past that? And it was a matter of looking at research, talking to teachers and other professionals who know a whole lot more about math instruction than I do, and making a good decision. And one of the things that struck me was, we had the largest crowd of citizens at that meeting than we've had at any board meeting in my community on the board. Most places it would be when you're talking about the gym or the football coach. In Oak Ridge, it was math instruction. That says something about this community.
School board members are trained not to micromanage. And therefore, there is a good relationship between school board members and the superintendent. That should be maintained, but he should be allowed to fulfill his job duties with little oversight, only when necessary. The school board is a position, though, of ultimate accountability and responsibility to the citizens, that their educational system is being run effectively, so that our students are being educated and not just focused on budgets and policies.
The relationship between the superintendent and the board, as stated, number one should be professional. There should be open lines of communication. As also stated, the board should never be in a position of micromanaging what the superintendent does. If, as I said in my opening, if we as a board do our job, and we hire the right person to be in place, then that person should be given the flexibility by the board to put the right people in place at the administrative level. If those people are in the right place, and the right teachers get in place, if the right teachers are in place, then students are given the opportunity that they deserve to receive a quality education. Curriculum decisions, we're not curriculum experts by any means. We've learned a lot about curriculum as board members. We have to trust that, again, those right people are in the place that can bring us the necessary information, so when decisions are to be made, we have the information to effectively make those decisions.
Very good, thank you. Sort of following up on that question, it's obvious, I think, to anybody that the workforce skills needed out there these days is changing. It's not what it used to be even 10, 20 years ago. To that end, is the Oak Ridge City School system and its curriculum regarding these types of new skills or skills that are needed to compete in the workplace, are they being taught appropriately, adequately, enough, too much? And I think the first question goes to Myra.
If 57% of our high school graduates are not prepared for college and career, we have to look at why. It's not a pleasant thing to have to do, to have to say, well, we're failing in this area, and what can we do to make it better? But it's a very real issue. If over half our students are very statisticistic, if I were to come in here and say only 20% of our students are having difficulty, you know, we still need to help them, but we would be doing a whole lot better with the other 80%. But right now, over half our students are failing to be ready and are having to go into remedial classes. I can't tell you how many families I've talked to, their students graduated here, that they had to go to remedial classes before they could actually get into college content in local colleges and universities, wherever they go. That's a problem, and we can do better than that. We can do better.
First off, I would disagree with that statistic that the preparation of our students to go to college is that. Our graduation rate, the number of students that attend college, the number of students that continue on in their college education is great. It's important to understand that students learn differently today than they did five years ago. As we continue to prepare ourselves in Oak Ridge to deal with those differences, we can lay the classes out. Part of the process is the student has to take advantage of what is there. Two quick examples. This year, we started an automotive class. 57 students signed up for that class. This is going to offer these students certification to move on in that industry. The ROTC program that I mentioned is going to offer a chance for kids to move who want a military career. The programs across the gamut of what we're offering is great, and I think we are providing an opportunity for all students to find their niche.
Well, the challenge we face is that we are preparing children for jobs of the future that we don't even know exist. So we have made great strides, I think, in being able to offer much more than we used to. We have a large number of students who attain Microsoft industry certifications before they graduate from high school. We have the automotive program. We have a fabulous world-class welding program. More kids want to take it than we have room for every year. They graduate with certifications and are ready after high school to go to a very well-paying career. We have students graduate from Oak Ridge High School, my youngest daughter is one, who leave high school with all the math they need for an engineering degree at the University of Tennessee. Are there things that we're missing? I'm sure there are. I don't know what they are yet, but we are doing a very good job of offering students the new tools that they need today.
Keith, you'll get this next question, sorry. I always do that, every forum, I always sort of lose my focus, forget who's next.
It's all right, I can sometimes just sit here and forget the question.
Well, and the moderator has done that as well. So I want to get back to this issue about the Oak Ridge High School and what has changed within the system, even in the past decade. Oak Ridge High School's traditionally been one of the elite schools in terms of a number of metrics and rankings in the state. But in the past decade, that ranking has fallen. It is still a good school, but it is not in that elite status. So two questions, and Keith, you begin. Number one, what happened? And number two, how do you increase the ranking back to where it was even a decade ago?
Well, first off, I'm always very suspicious of rankings. It's great to be ranked. You want to be number one. You want to be number two. But in reality, I've got to go back. If you have a plan in place, and I refer back to our seven keys, if that plan is in place, and you're working to meet those goals, and you've reached the seventh key with each student, then you are a success. And I know people like to see the fact that we're ranked. How do we compare against Farrakhan? How do we compare against Miracle? And I can bring, and would just briefly share some statistics. For example, if you look statewide, Oak Ridge Schools is currently one of only three districts in the state in which more than 33% of our graduates graduate with at least one score of three or higher on advanced placement test. Now, do you want to rank that? Do we want to have a ranking of that? That's a good ranking. We are facing students who learn differently. Yes, we have work to do. We have plenty of work to do. And our program has to be developed to face those needs of those students.
Keith is correct in that. One of the things that I've observed in the last 12, 13 years is the growth in the number of magnet schools. And magnet schools are able to selectively choose which students they let in to come into the, take advantage of the programs. So they may have to take a test and pass it to get in. You're bringing in some of the brightest of the brightest. And if you look at these rankings, they're frequently dominated by magnet schools. We don't choose our students. We take every child who comes in our door. And I believe if we continue working toward these seven keys, and there's much more to it than just the goals. There's actually a process for each of those. How are we going to get there? And that's in progress. Those things are being implemented. It takes a little time. It doesn't happen as soon as you take the vote or as soon as you appropriate the money. But if we focus on these seven keys, then yes, I believe we can get back to being the very best completely public school in the state.
I think you do everything I've been saying, focus on academics. Since when do we expect a student to go into the classroom for a test and hope for a 42? Never. We want to hope for an A. We should do the same. We are focusing too much attention on our own children. My children also were those kids who floated to the top. And I have a copy of this on the back table. I'd really like for some of you to take this seriously. I've been drawing this for the citizens as I talk to them, a pyramid. We've got the top, the kids, the best kids, they float to the top easily. Mine were the same. We give special needs kids the attention they need. And in the middle, we have over 50% of our kids are caught in this bubble. The teachers actually call this the bubble kids. I call them the overlooked kids. They go into our school system, and they just go through the process of school. And by the time they're in third grade, they must be able to read proficiently in order to be self-learners. Learn to read, to read to learn.
Thank you. Angie, you get this next question. We've, each of you have talked about the challenges of the budget and what funding does in terms of the school system. But let me ask you about your attitude about the arts. Where does it fall in your priority? Because a lot, some people would argue has no place in the schools when you're challenged with all these other issues. Others would say it should be a priority, should be a high priority. Where does it fall among your priorities?
In my priority, arts is very important, because there's a close relationship. If you look at our strings program, which we've been criticized for starting in fourth grade, because most people start in fifth. The reason is, though, when you start string instruments at that young age, and children learn to read music, it changes the neural development of the brain, and those students are better able to learn math, to learn language and communication skills. Visual arts is another one. Our art teacher at Jefferson Middle School has done the most fabulous job in integrating science with art. And if you've ever seen any of the student work where they've gone to the science lab and looked through the microscope, and then taken that and made artwork from it of the things that they saw under the microscope, our teachers are getting incredibly creative at every school, in every discipline, of combining the arts with academics. They work well together. You engage kids who otherwise would not be engaged. So it is important.
It's very important. Children are all unique and different, just as we all are in this room. Every one of us is different. And those that are inclined toward the arts, toward music, they need that opportunity. This is very important. I took violin at Woodland Elementary when I was in the fourth grade, and I was the first year of a pilot program. I love that I was able to do that. I played in the band at Jefferson. That meant so much to me, even today, because I love music so much. Those programs, I don't feel, are awesome.
The arts have the highest priority. We, as Angie has said, the relationship that we often see between the arts and academic classes is great. A great example, my son started out being about as good as artists as I am. We struggle with stick figures. If you walk down the stairs at our house, there's a picture that hangs on the wall of him, that he drew when he was in art class at Oak Ridge High School. The value that he got out of that, the accomplishment that he got out of that, meant a lot to him, encouraged him, gave him the opportunity to learn that he could do something different than being in a math class, being in an English class, being in a science class. That gave him that opportunity. That's what we've got to provide, is the opportunity.
Very good. I'm out of questions. I could throw some more out at you, but I think we're going to stop there. And we're going to now do our closing statements. We will go in reverse order from the way we started. So Angie, you will be first. You have one minute.
Again, thank you for being here this morning bright and early. Early voting begins on October 19th and convenes to November 3rd. Election day is November 8th. I hope that you will participate, and that you will encourage your friends and neighbors to participate, to study the issues, and to not simply accept numbers and facts that are thrown out there. Look it up. It's not hard to find. If you don't understand it, call the school office and ask. That information is there. Are we where we want to be yet? Absolutely not. That's why I'm running again, because we've set a good process in place, and we need to stay the course to finish it out. Education is a lot about fads. We're going to do this, we're going to do that. You change your mind, the state does it to us all the time. They've just done it with tests. But if we stay the course, we will get there. When we hit these seven keys, we will be the school system you all want us to be.
Thank each of you for coming. I have a feeling I'll see many of your faces throughout the next two weeks as we have a number of these events. Education is that journey. It's a journey that takes a community. It takes great teachers. It takes people who are willing to commit. We're fortunate that we live in a community that is willing to make a commitment toward education. I appreciate the opportunity that I have and have had to be a part of Oak Ridge Education. We have great things on the horizon. Those great things are being accomplished because we have great teachers. And as Angie said, there is work to do. We have a plan through our seven keys to accomplish that. We have a plan through our five-year plan, Oak Ridge 2020, to do that. And we will continue to make progress and provide quality education for all students. Thank you for coming.
Angie said, look up the stats. Better yet, I have them printed. You can see this after we're finished. Serving on the school board should not be about what internal stakeholders want, but instead about what the public wants and needs for the next generation. Serving as a school board member is the ultimate position of accountability and responsibility to the parents and students for the excellence or failure of our students. Statistics show that over 90% of school members, school board members' time and focus is on budgets and policy, and only 6% is on academics. But education is about reading and math. It's time we have a leader with enough influence to shift the focus to academics. With roughly 60% of students in grades three to eight performing below grade level in math and reading, my plan for improving our schools is to prepare the ordinary student to become extraordinary with reading and math skills that lead to further development, to redirect greater resources to our elementary and middle school classes, to value every teacher while teacher while encouraging parental support. Reading and math are essential building blocks of education. Educators know best how to teach, and we must empower our teachers because they want to see our children succeed. Our children's future depends on strong leaders who are willing to work to effect positive change in our local schools.
Thank you, Myra. Let's give our candidates a big round of applause. And I personally want to thank each of you for attending today and giving us your opinions, and, and obviously, thanks to the audience here who wanted to hear what those opinions were. So, again, thank you all, and I'm sure we'll be hearing much more from all three of you here down the road. Thank you. Stacy?
Let's give Jean a round of applause. Great job, thank you. Very pleased, I should have mentioned this to, to begin with, but we've had Mayor Gooch and Councilman Hope here, school board member, school board members, the superintendent of schools. Glad to have you all with us. Appreciate you being here this morning. And certainly, we appreciate the candidates' serving, desire to serve our community. It's always a very positive thing to have people who will step up and, and make an effort to, to make our community a better place to live. As Angie said, there's some dates I put over here. There's another, there's a form on the 18th of October for those candidates who are running for city council. Same time, same room. Love to have you attend that day. Early voting, as she said, begins the 19th and continues through the 3rd. And then, I would also remind you that, that the chamber sponsors and one of our key areas of work is advocacy, and we would love to have you be participating in that effort. If you're a company or individual, is a member of the chamber, we have an advocacy, advocacy committee that, that supports issues that are important to our community, that meets on the 6th of October. Love to have you be a part of that. Missed anything? Glad to have you with us. Thank, we're adjourned.